All right, welcome. Tonight's special council meeting for final passing of this year's 2018 mayor's budget, which in fact is a city budget.
Of course, yeah.
Clerk, please.
Councilman Perry.
President.
Councilman Acosta. Councilman Figueroa.
President.
Councilwoman Inceca. Councilman Oze.
President.
Councilwoman Rivera.
President.
Councilwoman Zolan.
President.
Your performance.
I, the ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and in this world of fifteen justices, the world.
Mr. Chairman. Get this out of the way. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, as I have, I file an objection to this meeting. I wish to go on record of objecting to the meeting, the action taken at this meeting, if there does take any action. I have an objection. I'd like to read into the record and present. City of Central Falls, Robert Ferry, Council President, Matthew Driscoll, City Solicitor, Sonia Gray, City Clerk, all members of the City of Central Falls City Council, 580 Broad Street, Central Falls, Rhode Island, 02863. Regarding violation of rules of the City Council. Dear City officials, I hereby file another objection and complaint of violations to the rules of the Central Falls City Council, which has gone on unanswered. The Central Falls, the special City Council meeting called by Mayor James DeOser on Tuesday, May 15, 2018, to present his fiscal year 2019 annual operating budget ordinance and other documents was in violation of our rules. One, Rule 16, doc, subsection B, C, and D. Two, Rule 17, ordinances and resolutions, reference passage. Three, with no notice or agenda documents provided as was admitted by the City Clerk at the subsequent meeting. The four, the special meeting called by the mayor was not in compliance to the rules of the City Council, and I filed an objection to that meeting, which I was not provided notice in agenda documents and was not in attendance. Five, I informed the Council President and the City Solicitor of these violations of our rules prior to this meeting and was advised to reschedule with proper notice. Six, on May 11, 2018, I appeared at the Central Falls City Clerk's office and requested all council documents and any other materials due me at that time, and I was informed nothing was available. Seven, Rule 3, special meetings allow the mayor to call a special meeting, but he or she must comply with all council rules, which was not done at this time. Eight, due to the thay as enumerated above, I contend that the action taken on the May 15 special meeting was invalid and needs to be redone in conformance with council rules, which has not been done as of yet. A special meeting of the Central Falls City Council held on Tuesday, June 5, 2018, was also in violation of the council rules as I have previously informed the Council President on June 1, 2018, and contacted the Office of the City Solicitor on June 5, 2018, and filed another complaint that no notice or agenda documents were provided to me prior to the special meeting. Due to this act, due to this violation of our rules of the City Council, again, I contend that any action taken at that meeting is invalid and not properly before the council due to violations of notice and agenda documents not provided in conformity to council rules. I also contend that the mayor's fiscal year 2019 annual operating budget ordinance and resolutions were improperly introduced and that the suspect action of first passage on June 5, 2018 is thereby improper also. At the City Council meeting last evening, on June 11, 2018, I again registered my formal complaint on the council record and contend that any action taken other than introduction or first passage at the special meeting of the City Council this evening, June 12, 2018, will be improper, invalid, and in violation of our rules of the City Council and will place our annual operating budget ordinance and resolutions in legal jeopardy. At the City Council meeting held on June 11, 2018, I submitted to the Council President, City Clerk, each City Council member, and the City Solicitor a package of City Council ordinances and resolutions for introduction pursuant to the following. One, Central Falls City Charter, Chapter 2, Council Manic Procedure, Section 2-201, Subsection 1. Every ordinance and resolution shall be introduced only in written or printed form. Two, Rules of the Central Falls City Council, Rule Number 15, Introduction in Form of Ordnances and Resolutions, states the full text of every ordinance, resolution, order, report, or paper shall be in written or printed form on the proper form to be furnished by the City Clerk and shall bear the written signature or name and ink or of the authorized person presenting state. Three, I presented all ordinances and resolutions to the Council President as I have been instructed previously by the City Clerk while providing the City Clerk, all City Council members, and the City Solicitor with complete printed copies for introduction with the understanding that no action would be taken that meeting. The City Council is governed by laws and rules, and I'm feeling that I am not being treated fairly and equitably as a duly elected member of the City Council. Having served the City of Central Falls in various offices and positions for over 40 years, I have a unique understanding of our municipal government and its operation and procedures, and I take my duty to serve very seriously and with love of our city always in mind. I hereby present this letter at the June 12, 2018, special City Council meeting for all City officials here to be placed in the record as an official letter in correspondence to the City Council and for the general public. Respectfully submitted, Thomas Lizia, City Council Member, Ward 5, 1072 Lonzeal Avenue, and my available cellphone, 225-9988, and my available email,
Can we have a copy of that?
I'm going to leave you one.
Go ahead.
On the record. Page 11 for Colin.
Sure.
And who else? But this is just Colin.
Yeah, good evening. I just, according to our fellow councilmen that have read here, there's so many things that have been done wrong and kind of confused with that. And my understanding, every meeting had been reported to the state and everything seemed like it complied. Anyway, I would like to ask the City Solicitor about what he's saying because it's a serious matter. What he's saying here, and I would like to make sure that we are doing it right in every meeting, and it would be good if he can give us some information about this. Yes?
Sure, councilman. I have been in receipt of the complaints of Councilman Lizia and have responded to them as quickly as I can, and I believe I have copied members of the council on some or all of those responses. I think there are two levels. Strike that. I think there are three levels at which these complaints fall, or maybe three buckets. I used to like to use the word buckets. So bucket one is what does state law require in the Open Meetings Act, which is the overriding law that provides for the public notice of meetings in Rhode Island? And all of the council meetings for the city budget, upon my review, have satisfied the Open Meetings Act, and I have looked at each one. And so, on a fundamental level, and that is the most important, we could be held liable by the Attorney General, and the meetings could be null and void, which would mean the budget was null and void if we were in violation of the Means Act. We are not in violation of the Means Act. Number two, Councilman Lizia has alleged violations of the council rules, specifically whether he received his packet within the one week prescription of the rules. And I believe this was debated at a council meeting seven weeks ago, and the City Clerk did admit that one of the budget packets or the agenda was not given at that one week timeframe. And the question really for this council is, there's no one that enforces the council rules other than the council. The rules are sort of the rules by which you've agreed to work together as a body. And so, at that time, the discussion was, well, everyone knew the mayor was giving his budget address. Everyone knew he was speaking and introducing the ordinance, and there was no, as you'd call it, damage, or there was no surprise as to what was happening that night. It was an inadvertent error by the clerk's office. And so, third, and so, it was my legal opinion at the time that it was an inadvertent error with no clear harm to anyone. But if the council wanted to take action, it would have to be in the form of a motion, and it was for this council to decide. Finally, the third bucket would be, you know, what happened last night, which is, you know, what's on the agenda, what's not on the agenda? And per the rules and per Roberts' rules, the agenda is set by the president, and if the councilman has ordinances and resolutions he'd like to introduce, there's two vehicles to do that, to ask the president to put on the agenda. Or second, to bring it to a meeting like this, like he tried to do last night. But state law does require you to add it to the agenda before it can be introduced in the form of a motion. And so, in reviewing all three of these buckets, I have found no violation that would endanger this council for passing this bucket.
Thank you.
So, according to you when you were explaining today, is that everything that we have done, the meeting that we have, I wasn't there yesterday, but the meeting yesterday, and the meeting that we are having today, and our previous meeting that, May 11, and other meetings, they all have incompliances?
In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, yes.
So my next question is, what can we do to prevent that every time that we have a meeting, we have said same argument, said same problem all the time, and we kind of waste a lot of time just discussing over and over again the same issue? How can we do, what can we do to prevent this to happen? Yes, okay. Sorry.
Well, I'm sorry. I think a lot of these complaints simply have no merit. And so, you can debate complaints that have no merit, but as a lawyer, I'm bound to, you know, read the law and evaluate the complaint. Again, the only complaint that I found that had merit was that one agenda was not distributed within a week per the rules. The rules said it's got to go out a week before the meeting. The clerk admitted that that in fact happened, and the question was, was there any harm? Well, the mayor's budget address was published in press releases, it was published on social media. Every member of the council knew about it. Every member of the council received an email about it. And the agenda was simply introduction. There was no discussion of the budget. There was no vote on the budget. It was just introduction of ordinances. It was properly posted pursuant to the Secretary of State's office. It was just, and so, if the council wanted to take action on that violation of the rule, the council could. The council is the policing body of itself. So if there was a violation of the rules, someone could ask the president to enforce the rule and take action based on that. Other than that, I don't know what else, you know, could be done relative to these issues. These are more, that's all I can say.
I'd like to ask the Solicitor how he assesses harm, specifically along the claim about the mayor's address, everyone knowing about it. My, I guess, consternation, you might say there, is that by not receiving an agenda, I was unaware that that was a legal council meeting. And so, knowing about the mayor's address and knowing that it's a council meeting is something different. And your judgment about a harm, I think, is important for us to know kind of how you assess that as we go forward. But also, you know, I think there were at least three people at that meeting who were not aware that the mayor's address was a City Council meeting, including the Council President himself, who stated so during the meeting. And councilmembers there, and myself.
I evaluate harm based on a legal standard, which is, so, when I speak to the Attorney General's office about introduction versus action, the introduction of an ordinance is something you can do without public notice. The councilman tried to do it last night. So, you can introduce it via motion. And so, in the Attorney General's point of view in enforcing the Open Means Act, introduction of a bill which requires no discussion, requires no vote, therefore no action that could harm the public, is of no harm. And that comes from their office. Relative to what-
And that was run last night.
If-
Introduction.
Well, it's got to be a motion. It was voted on that. Yeah, no, that's impressive.
Back to my question.
Relative to whether you, as a councilmember, felt harm as a result of a violation of the rule, I didn't decide that. I said that if there was harm, the remedy is for this council to take action amongst itself.
Then my follow-up question is, what are appropriate actions within the council, you know, short of, which we obviously can't turn back time? So, we could have, the day before the mayor's address, submitted a motion to reschedule that address, which we talked about, but no one submitted a motion, to be fair. And so, what type of disciplinary, quote-unquote, protocols exist within the council body?
You could take any number of legislative remedies. You could ask the City Clerk to go through the procedures that her office uses to get you guys' agendas pursuant to the rules and create a schedule to enforce it, or maybe put it online, maybe. I don't want to speak for the clerk or put her in a weird position. But certainly, as the Solicitor, I serve the council, and so, you can hold me accountable for things I do, and the clerk also is there. And we sometimes miss things. I've missed things for you guys. And see, in this instance, there was an inadvertent error. And you can schedule more meetings. You can create new policies. You can change the rules. But, you know, at what point, you brought up, sometimes you suspend the rules when you were in your college organization. These are your rules, and whether you think this was a big enough harm that you want to do something about is a function of this body, the majority of this body. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't want to get into an argument, but I do want to address a couple of things. Councilman Acosta brought up a very good point. This is not a unique situation. Last year, there was no notice sent out for the budget address. And the council met, and it was the agenda that was, and I complained at that time, that was a violation. At the subsequent meeting, the council reintroduced the budget ordinances at the next meeting to take action. No such action was taken at this, during this time period. At the most, or at the least, the council could have reintroduced it at the next meeting and then took action for first passage, but it did not. So since it did not take action to introduce it at a proper legal meeting, the first action at a legal meeting was first passage, which I contest and contend was a violation of our rules and procedures. It's not a matter of what harm. It's a matter of, do we follow our council procedures when we want to? I'm asked to follow the letter of the law when it comes to these meetings, and I try to. Last evening, I was always informed to, if I have something to present for introduction only, then I can provide it and present it for introduction. I was told in the past I am not to give items for introduction of the council agenda to the clerk's office. I have to give it to the Council President. And that's what I did last evening. I gave a package of materials to the Council President of ordinances and resolutions.
Tommy, you're getting a little bit of a down there. You got an answer last night from the City Solicitor regarding what you tried to do.
I didn't.
So with that, let's move on. I have one question for you.
I introduced ordinances.
You stated about a half hour ago that this is illegal. So are you telling us you're not going to participate in an illegal meeting that you-
I'm going to object. That's what I've done.
Thank you. Let's move on. Last night, you got a ruling, Tommy.
Oh, I did.
Yes, you did.
Oh, I did. Mr. Chairman, I am-
Are you with that?
Orders and resolutions on the record, Mr. Chairman.
I think we're up to item three.
Public hearing and consideration of fiscal 2019 city budget.
Public hearing is now open?
Yes. Low rain, Savard.
Unfortunately, the rain, we don't have a microphone.
Do I have to come up there? Can I call this way? If you could walk to the table so we can get you on up.
You can sit at the table.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I'm allowed to speak on the issue in front of us. I do want to say something. Not yesterday, but the day before yesterday, when I went online to the city website to see what was happening, and I saw yesterday's meeting, June 11th, I saw the 12th, and I checked the agenda, and second passage for this ordinance. And I looked back on all of the agendas passed, recently passed. No first passage anywhere.
And it was the fifth.
The fifth is not even listed there.
No fifth.
It's not listed. It's not listed, not on my computer, anyway. There's the 11th, there's 12th, no fifth. One before that is the 23rd of May, or whatever. So, I was confused, but then Tommy said something about there was a meeting last week, but it's not on the website. You have your phone check. It's not there. So, now, Mr. Chairman, say. Answer me. What about the June 5 not being listed on the website? I would have been there, had I known. So you're saying that it was listed? Where was it listed? Not on the website, maybe on the door in the City Clerk's office? That's my only question apart from your budget.
Ms. Savard, I am pulling up the Secretary of State's website right now.
Secretary of State, okay.
And it lists all the meetings and when it's posted. And I'm more than happy to show you. You can set up an alert so that as soon as the City Clerk posts a meeting, it shoots you an email. That's what I have online, so I can check and verify the stuff. That is what the state of Rhode Island has set up as its open meeting system.
So as long as it's there, not on the Central Falls website?
I can't speak to what's on the city's website. All I can do is-
It's not there.
...monitor the Open Means Act, which requires posting in Central Falls and on the website.
All right, as far as the budget is concerned, all right. The city, and I, I'm sorry, but I need to read things before I say it. I cannot off the top of my head say things. So I've prepared something. I was going to type it out and give you copies so that you, I guess, can follow my drain here. So as far as I'm concerned, the city of Central Falls should not be the money drain that we have here. We have had, as a taxpayer, our taxes increased from 20% to 23%, or more, or more. I don't know how many years it's taken that. As far as the city finances and monies that we collect are concerned, we need, number one, number one, what to do is to pay down our debt, especially our debt to the fire and the police engineers, who some, I have heard, are on welfare. How can, how can, I guess it can be done to live on $1,000 a month? I wouldn't be able to. I guess, maybe you learn those things. But how? How can that be? That you are allowing, I don't know, there was supposedly 250 engineers, but now because of deaths, 100 and something now, all right? We still owe those people. And I know there's something at the State House to help them out. But it's here that we need to, not, okay? Not what we're doing in this budget. That's my point. Another page. After 31 years of working, I was not making, after 31 years, I was not making, what? The Central Falls Chief of Staff, and I do not want to offend anyone. Chief of Staff, City Clerk, Deputy Director of Finance, Deputy Director of Planning, Code Enforcement, unbelievable salaries, Finance, Director of Parks, Director of Planning. These pays are way out of whack and out of control. I looked online today to see what the median income of Central Falls is, and different websites, different amounts. $21,000 was one, $34,000 was another, $38,000 another. And that is not the low ball that the 2010 census date. The council is not supposed to be a rubber stamp for the mayor, and that's what's happening here. That's what's happening here. You need to do better than that. No tax increase is not good enough. The Central Falls taxpayer deserves a decrease in taxes or, at the very least, at the very least, pay down the debt that we have. least, pay down the debt that we have. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I am still concerned about the June 5th meeting because now I can't talk twice about this. I can only talk tonight because of an alert that I need to get in front of, you know. Thank you very much. Someone else? Did you want to speak? No? So I have to say.
Public hearing is now closed. Thank you, General. What is your pleasure? We have before us the annual operating budget. You want to read the headline, please?
Item A, annual operating budget ordinance, general fund, sub A, second reading.
I have a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move to table the ordinance to properly address its introduction and first passage.
I have a motion by Councilman Aziz to table the, I guess, the annual operating budget ordinance, which is under A. Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing unseen on the motion dies. Is there another motion on the floor?
Motion to approve the annual operating budget.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Rivera.
Second.
Annual operating budget. We have a second by Councilman Figueroa and also Councilman Solano. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lizier.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, at last evening's meeting, I submitted a amendment.
Tom, this is last night, last night. We're looking forward to getting this done.
Mr. Chairman, I submitted an amendment last evening.
Are you participating in this so-called illegal meeting?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. I'm objecting to this meeting. I don't believe it's proper. I think the ordinance is not.
Your objection has not so noted.
But I submitted, Mr. Chairman, an amendment or an ordinance amending this.
You don't have time to do that, Mr. Solicitor.
The introduction was called by the city solicitor as leading a motion which he did not receive. So again, object to his consideration.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I contest that the interpretation is not correct.
Councilman Ferry?
Introduction allows anyone to present a written copy to the council.
Councilman Figueroa?
This is an illegal meeting. The action taken is improper and illegal.
Councilman Figueroa?
This is an illegal meeting and improper action taken on this agenda. I object to this ordinance being put.
Councilwoman Rivera? Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Motion varies, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next, item B.
Item B is an ordinance pertaining to the salaries of department heads and others in unclassified service, sub A, second reading.
You have a motion.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion by Councilwoman Rivera to approve. Ordinance pertaining to salaries of department heads, second by Councilman Figueroa and Councilman Solano. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lizier, you'll read your objections.
Mr. Chairman, I submitted an amendment to this ordinance. I wish to have that ordinance amended, Mr. Chairman.
The amendment was not accepted. Last thing, Mr. Solicitor.
It was introduced, Mr. Chairman. I wish to reintroduce, Mr. Chairman. I have an amendment, Mr. Chairman. I object. I'm not finished, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, and under discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Under discussion?
Yes.
Not an amendment? You want to discuss?
I wish to amend the ordinance, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I have a right to amend, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second for Mr. Lizier's amendment?
I didn't make it here, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Okay. The chairman, I submitted an amendment. I will go over my amended version that I submitted last evening to be acted on at the future council meeting. You are taking action on, on a sub A before you're allowed to hear an amended sub B. What was submitted?
Tom, we're on the salaries of department heads and others. And sub A is going to be inserted under a letter D. You have that in front of us.
Amended sub A. I'm amending that, Mr. Chairman. I'm amending the line Assistant City Solicitor Criminal Prosecutor, which states $242,000, $242,000.
It's not 200.
It's 22,000. The cross out.
Yeah, and we talked about that last time. I asked a question, by the way, because it seemed like it's 242,000, but it isn't. It's 22,000.
I didn't get that, Mr. Chairman, because I wasn't informed of the meeting at that.
Yeah, the one you're looking at is the, is the right one. The one is scratched out. That's why you think it's 242. It's 22.
There was no change to it.
It's crossed out.
That's the one you have.
And there is no, there is no money whatsoever? Is it zero?
No, it's 20. You don't understand what I'm saying. You think it says 242.
Correct.
That's not a four. It's a one crossed out, so it's not 12, it's 22.
That's not done online.
Yes, it is. It's not a four.
No.
How would it's all crossed out?
Is this completely crossed out?
Mine's completely crossed out. That's why I objected to it and amended it, which I submitted.
That's crossed out, wasn't it? Not the one that was submitted, that's what he did.
That's the one I received.
Crossed out, that's what he did.
That's the last one.
You all had the same copy.
It's the last one I received. So is it, my understanding, that it's 22,000?
Correct.
And I do not wish to amend that, Mr. Chairman. Next, Business Outreach and Public Relations amending it to 40,000. Chief of Staff amending to 55,000. Community Health Coach amending to 40,000. Deputy Director DPW Code Enforcement, Deputy Director City Clerk, I'm amending to 55,000. The Deputy Director DPW Code Enforcement, I'm amending to 40,000. Deputy Director Planning and Economic Development, I'm amending to 55,000. Director Human Resources Contract, no, I'm sorry, Director of Finance, I'm amending to 84,000. Director Planning and Economic Development, I'm amending to 67,000. Inspector Electrical, I'm amending to 6,000. Inspector Plumbing, I'm amending to 6,000.
Can you put that one? Councilman Lizier, can you put that one?
Electrical inspector, 6,000. Plumbing inspector, 6,000. Principal Planner, 50,000. Redevelopment Agency Contract of Special Projects Consultant, 40,000. Mr. Chairman, I submitted an ordinance, but I have a resolution for that, but I will pass that, these be amended and also reflect in the new ordinance that I'm submitting.
Everyone get Mr. Lizier's particular salaries for a particular department? Is there a second on Mr. Lizier's amendment? Hearing unseen on the amendment dies. We have a motion by Councilwoman Rivera, I believe, second by Councilman Figueroa and Councilman Solano regarding passage by the ordinance pertaining to salaries of department heads and others in unclassified service. Is there any discussion? You will call a vote.
Councilman Ferry?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta? Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilman Lizier?
No.
Councilwoman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item is item C, an ordinance amending wage schedule generally, second reading.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I move to table.
I have a motion by Councilman Lizier to table item C, an ordinance amending wage schedule generally. Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing unseen on the motion, the table dies. Is there another motion on the floor?
Motion to approve the ordinance amending wage schedule.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Rivera to approve the ordinance amending the wage schedule. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Solano. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilman Ferry?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilman Lizier?
No.
Councilwoman Rivera? Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Motion for, Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman, if I explain my vote, Mr. Chairman, I'm voting no because I don't believe that the, these ordinances and resolutions are properly before us. Not that I contest that the information in them is not accurate, but that the information or the presentation is being corrected and validated.
Next item, item D.
Item D, the capital program and the capital budget ordinance, second reading.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Turn motion. Any discussion, Mr. Lizier?
Mr. Chairman, I submitted a substitution at the last meeting. I will, I was concerned that what was originally submitted was not proper and correct according to our rules and charter. I am happier to see that an amendment was a substitute A was submitted before us. I would like to include, amend to section, change section two to a section, to a new section two, that section, the new section two shall read, "Any expenditures of monies in fiscal year 19 from any funds, accounts, or sources, either federal, state, local, or private, spent for any capital program or capital budget expense must be requested of the Central Falls City Council through the normal city charter and revise ordinance budgetary requirements prior to being expended." This allows the city council, not strictly at the discretion of the planning department, to spend funds on projects that are not notified to the city council. This gives the city council review authority to approve expenditure of funds, which is our role, and not to cut, launch, grant authority to one department to spend 300,000. I'm glad to see it has been amended, but I think we need additional budgetary oversight, and that's why I'm asking to amend section, a new section two, and the current section two will be now section three. I make it form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Lizier, amending substitute A regarding the budget ordinance. Is there a second? Hearing unseen on the motion dies. Is there further motion on the floor, Mr. Acosta?
I have a question for this solicitor. What was the language that we included last year in this ordinance to make sure that we received a monthly report on expenditures from the capital fund? So we added language last year during the budget meetings to make sure, which we actually didn't start receiving until midway through the year, that we would receive a monthly report on the capital fund.
Councilman, I can provide that to you in 20 seconds if you allow me just to look it up for one second. Section 2-329, the finance director shall make a monthly accounting to the city council on the status of these funds.
Thinking now, was that in, was that in this ordinance or was that written into the?
Last year's city budget included a separate ordinance that created the reserve fund and amended the capital budget fund, and so that amendment was put in 2-329. So that's current city law that that should happen.
So that will continue to happen regardless of whether we include the language in this ordinance?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. That answered my question.
Sub A has not been introduced. Sub A has not been introduced.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce the annual capital program and capital budget ordinance substitute A.
I have a motion by Councilman Acosta.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Solano. Introduce substitute A of the annual capital program and capital budget ordinance. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as I stated, I believe that this substitute A falls in the same vein as the original. It's improperly before us.
You will call a vote.
Councilman Ferry?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilman Lizier?
No.
Councilwoman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Motion for, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve as amended the item D, capital program, capital budget ordinance.
Most of them move somewhere.
And Councilman, uh, approved by Councilman Acosta. Is there a second? Second, next, Councilwoman Rivera. Any further discussion? Any discussion? Hearing unseen on the vote, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Councilman Acosta.
I just wanted to, to thank the mayor's office for amending the ordinance to include the details of the funds. Just make sure, just want to make sure for the council that we're aware, there is, there are funds slated for fiscal year 20 on the same sheet. Obviously, we'll have to approve those next year, but just remembering to ask for the details of those funds as the review of the charter shows that they do have to delineate each expense.
Thank you.
Councilman Ferry?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilman Lizier?
No.
Councilwoman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Motion for, Mr. President.
Now, before we adjourn, I want to thank Councilmembers for their patience throughout this process. It seems budget time is always, takes a lot of time, patience, and effort, and it's not easy sometimes. Uh, thank you, we're gonna get through it. A motion to adjourn.
Turn.
Motion to adjourn, Councilman Figueroa. Stand adjourned at 6:50 AM. Thank you. Thank you, Lowain. Thank you for the range of your company.